Good afternoon. It is 4:30 PM on Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, the first item is a consent agenda. Councillors, what are your wishes?
I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item number 2.1 is a public hearing for noise variance for New Ulm Chamber of Commerce Crazy Days. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If you would like to be heard, please state your name and address for the record at the microphone.
I don't believe there's anybody here going to come up and speak on it. Subject to the public hearing, offer the resolution, close the public hearing and authorizing the request from the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce for a noise variance to permit amplified souled music during Crazy Days on Minnesota Street between First North and Center Streets on Friday and Third North and Center Street on Saturday for the following: Friday, July 25th, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM; and Saturday, July 26th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 2.2 is also a public hearing for noise variance for New Ulm Chamber of Commerce spiking in the street. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to be heard, please state your name and address for the record at the microphone.
Well, I'm not seeing anybody that wants to speak on the public hearing aspect. So, subject to the public hearing, offering the resolution, closing the public hearing and authorizing the request from New Ulm Chamber of Commerce for a noise variance to permit amplified sound music during spiking in the street on Minnesota Street between Second North and Center Streets for the following: Friday, August 1st, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM; and Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 2.3 is another public hearing on the final plat of Sarah Hill's fourth addition. At this time, this public hearing will be open.
All right. John Nysley, Planner with the City of New Ulm. I'll give a very abbreviated staff report. This is the final plat for Sarah Hill's fourth addition located at 1827 Ryan Road and 1900 Allison Avenue. Planning Commission at its May 29th, 2025 meeting unanimously approved the final plat. I would note that there have been no changes from the preliminary plat to the final plat. Plating fee of $260 has been paid. There's a Parkland dedication fee of $750 for the two undeveloped lots. That's also been paid. Notice has been provided to Land Surveyor to provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2016 or newer format, and the requested easement area has been provided on the plat. I would just note that the plating of these two lots is for single-family homes to be sold privately on the lots. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
Okay, one question, John. I know you got the four conditions. Do you want the primary issues, or you want to go down to the legal part of it? They're just a here different, or doesn't it make any difference with your four conditions? PSC, electronic file, the easements, five-foot rear alley?
Yeah, go with the conditions, with the conditions that have been provided in the staff report, just so we can have those for the record.
Gotcha. Motion, I mean, there's nobody going to step up to the mic. Close the public hearing, offer a resolution approving the final plat of Sarah Hill's fourth addition located at 1827 Ryan Road and 1900 Allison Avenue with the stated conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 3.1, tree license service renewal for 2025 and 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a tree service license renewal for Construction and Tree Services LLC for the period beginning July 2nd, 2025, ending June 30th, 2026, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 3.2 is a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Brown County Agricultural Society.
President and councillors, I'd like to make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license to the Brown County Agricultural Society to sell alcohol at the Brown County Free Fair, 1201 North State Street for the period beginning August 6th, 2025, and ending August 10th, 2025, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 3.3 is a temporary on-sale liquor license for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity.
I'll offer motion to approve the issuance of the temporary on-sale liquor license for Cathedral of Holy Trinity, DBA Holy Cross, AFC, to sell alcohol at Church Festival located at Brown County Fairgrounds, 1201 North State Street on Sunday, August 17th, 2025, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
And a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. We will be skipping item 3.4 and moving down to item 3.5, the Franklin Liquor License Extension for 2025 Downtown Events.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the Franklin to extend their liquor license for the following chamber-sponsored 2025 summer events to allow alcohol to be consumed, served, subject to conditions: Crazy Days, Minnesota Street from Third North to First North from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, July 26th; and First North Street from Minnesota to Alley from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM; car and bike roll-ins, Minnesota Street from Third North to First South from 3:30 to 8:00 PM Saturdays, July 12th, August 16th, September 13th; spiking in the street, Minnesota Street from Second North to Center from Friday, August 1st, at 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM; and Saturday, August 2nd, at 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM; and First North from Minnesota to Alley; lastly, parade of lights, Minnesota Street from First South to Fourth North from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on November 28th.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 4.1 is a variance request for 413 South Highland Avenue. Mr. Nysley.
All right. Thank you. This is a variance request by Tyler Zollner to construct a 14 and 1/2 by 26-foot garage addition to an existing detached garage 16 feet from the front yard property line on property legally described as the front half of Lot D of Outlot 313. So, the Planning Commission at its June 26th, 2025 meeting unanimously recommended approval of the variance request with two conditions. I'm just going to give a real brief background on why this request is being considered. So, the property requesting the variance is located in the front half of Outlot D, Outlot D of Outlot 313. The property was platted in 1954. Staff has consulted with the city attorney regarding provisions in the city zoning ordinance and its allowance of residential detached accessory structure of up to 1,000 square feet when the lot is directly abutting as a separate lot and under the same ownership. So, what I mean by that is, let's say you own Lot D and you own Lot E. If you have a house and a shed entirely on Outlot D, you could have 1,000 square feet there, and if you own the adjacent property, you could have another 1,000 square feet right there, as long as it's owned by the same property owner, and they meet all the setbacks. So, the city attorney has concluded that the zoning ordinance allows for this activity, provided the detached accessory structure meets all applicable setbacks of the zoning district. They also, city attorney also reviewed the lot and topographical map of the site and concurred with staff that this proposal would meet a variance request. The existing garage was constructed in 1965 and was approximately 22 feet from the front yard property line, so that's property line abutting South Highland Avenue at its closest point. The existing garage is 24 by 26, or 620 square feet in size, and with the addition, it would bring the total size of the garage to actually 1,001 square feet. So, I talked with the property owner about this, and we allow a maximum of 1,000 square feet. He's going to make an adjustment to lower that 14 and 1/2, down ever so slightly, to get to 1,000 square feet. The R1 zoning standards specify that the front yard setback is 30 feet in this area. So, within approximately 10 feet of the southeast corner of the existing garage, the ravine steeply drops off 10 vertical, 10 vertical distance over 25-foot horizontal distance, so there's a 25-foot slope right behind this garage, making it hard to add to the backside of the garage. And then, on the north side of the garage, between the house and this existing garage, that slope is actually 17%, so it's very steep on that side as well. So, he's proposing this variance, or this location in the only flat spot on that outlot. The addition extending to the south would meet the five yards, five-foot sideyard setback requirement of the zoning district. The applicant will use the existing curb cut on South Highland Avenue, tend to the garage, so no new curb cut will be necessary. The two recommended conditions were, one, that the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the Brown County Recorder's Office, and then, two, that the applicant shall contact the city to verify the location of the building once it is staked. And that concludes the staff report.
If there's no questions on it, I'm going to offer the resolution approving its conditions, the variance request by Tyler Zollner to construct a, you want to go 14 feet? Read it right in, instead of 14 and 1/2?
I think 14 and 1/4 feet will get you to that.
14.25 times 26, garage addition to an existing detached garage at 16 feet from the front yard property line on the property legally described as front half of Lot D of Outlot 313.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.2 is a planned unit development, general development plan for Project Spark.
Okay. So, this is a PUD, or Planned Unit Development, application with a general development plan by Steve Brown on behalf of Project Spark, a property legally described as lots 1 through 8, Block 1, that's the integer addition. The Planning Commission at their June 20, June 26th meeting unanimously recommended approval of the request with conditions, and that's based on the findings of fact that's in your packets for the council meeting tonight. So, for the purpose of evaluating this project, staff used the standards assigned to the R3 medium-density residence district. So, the subject property is a total area of .757 acres. The property has been vacant and was previously mined for gravel. The property was formerly lots 11, 12, 13, and 14, Block 52, south of Center Street, and again, has now been platted as lots 1 through 8, Block 1, integer addition. So, the purpose of that replating of the property in 2018 was to accommodate twin homes on three of the lots, and then, two single-family homes on the lot that abuts 13th South Street. The proposed project would involve the construction of 15 tiny homes, one common building, a parking lot along the alley, with stormwater being treated through the permeable parking lot along the alley. And each tiny home would be constructed at 20 feet wide by 20-foot in depth, or 400 square feet, and have a total height of 20 feet at the peak. The project is being proposed to be constructed in two phases. Phase 1 would include the construction of two model homes on lots 1 and 2, Block 1, integer addition, that's fronting 13th South Street. This first phase would allow the developer to prove the viability of the development to the community, and would also help secure funding for Phase 2. If approved, Phase 1 is proposed to be finished by the winter of 2025. Phase 2, you know, subject to the acceptance here, could start as early as spring of 2026. So, Phase 2 would be the remaining 13 tiny homes on the property. I would note, too, that in discussions with the developer, Phase 1 is not only just to see if it's financially viable, but also to see and get feedback from the rest of the community on how well they like the project, or if they like the project. The developer is intending to continue to own the property and homes, and the homes would generate revenue for the New Ulm Business Retail and Innovation Center, also known as New Brick. I want to give a little background, though, on the zoning history of this property, because it's, this area has changed or gone back and forth with different zoning districts sometimes. So, in September of 1963, this property was zoned commercial. Then, in August of 64, it was rezoned to industrial. In October of 68, it was then again rezoned to R3 Multiple Family Residence District. And then, March of '22, it was rezoned to Medium Density Residence District, the R3. So, I would note that the R3 in our old zoning ordinance, the 19, the one that was in 1968, that R3 was our High Density Residence District. So, that, under that zoning district, you could do anything from single-family all the way up to multifamily apartments in that zoning district. And that is why you see such a mix of different housing and residential densities down on that block. It includes single-family homes, twins, row homes, apartments. It's all within that little area. So, the development history down there is, in 1979, there was four townhomes built. In '83, there was two duplexes. In 1987, there was a group home. 2012, there's a single-family home. And then, in 2018 and 2019, there was two twin homes. So, that's all within the same block that we're considering here today. We did receive a letter in opposition to this project, concerned about density, concerned that this would look odd within the rest of the neighborhood, and that is all included in your agenda packet here tonight. There was also folks that did show up to the Planning Commission meeting but did not speak at the microphone or voice concerns regarding the project to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend one, one change or potential condition be added to this project or this PUD general development plan, and that is because they're only providing 15 parking spots, so that'd be one per home. There is likely going to be some on-street parking by residents if they have guests over, if it's more than one person that lives in that home. And one of the parking areas where they could park is up on Minnesota Street or on 13th. But to get down from Minnesota, down into the development currently, you would actually have to walk in the street and then down through the alley. So, the Planning Commission recommended that we work with the developer to provide some sort of pedestrian access from Minnesota down into the development, so they don't have to walk all the way down to the alley if they're parking up on Minnesota. The developer was okay with a condition of that nature. There's two recommended conditions. One, that the applicant or owner pay the cost to record the necessary documents with the Brown County Recorder's Office, and two, that the establishment of the PUD project will require the approval of, A, the rezoning of the property by ordinance, and B, a development agreement. We have three attachments. That's the staff report to the Planning Commission, resolution, and then findings of facts. That was approved by the Planning Commission. And that concludes the staff report.
Mr. Nysley? I don't know if there's any comments, because this is a different.
A couple of questions, comments, whatnot. I mean, I'm all for the project and tiny homes. I think it's a great idea. When I looked at it, the rezoning we did on this, you wouldn't even be in here if we hadn't rezoned it in 2022. What time of home are you going to put up? When I looked at it, I thought of, it looks like barracks to me, military barracks. That's the first thing that popped into my head. It looked like small military barracks.
So, if I could just elaborate on that a little bit. So, they're 20 by 20 by 20-foot peak.
Right.
So, they are, it's a full first floor, and then, it's also, you can stand in the second floor as well. So, it's, and actually, the developer brought to the Planning Commission, and should be in your packets, a number of homes that are of similar size that we already have in New Ulm.
I know where there's a few old ones like that.
Yeah. So, yeah, that was, that was the information provided to us from the, from the developer. There is green space that are, that's in between the buildings. If you look on the site plan, it looks like there's an outline of 25 by 20, and that 25 actually signifies the extension of the concrete. So, there's a little front porch landing area of concrete in front of each one of these homes. The actual footprint of the home would be 20 by 20.
Yeah, and the only other one comment I want to bring up, I do understand, I mean, we all have the letter in our packet, the neighbor in the twin home, they're like, thinking there would be twin homes or whatnot next to it. I assume that the developer, he set on 15?
Yeah, I had that discussion with the developer, and at this point in time, to make the project financially feasible, they need to go with 15. Now, that being said, they're doing this in multiple, in two phases. So, it might not even be a Phase 2, but Phase 1, they want to make sure they can make this work financially and, and get true costs of what this development is going to be.
And Phase 1 will be on which end, or which?
Phase 1 will be on the very north end.
North end?
It's lot, it's the lot that abuts 13th South, and that's actually a lot that's been split by a simple lot division. It's a 50 by 165 lot. And there'd be one of those tiny home models on each one of those lots. And I would note that we had had a discussion about that, because if the project were not to be feasible, financially feasible, and they quit there, that each one of those homes would be on their own separate utility service, so that they could be sold individually.
Individually.
If needed.
Again, I'm for the project. It's just, we have changed this one word, medium to high density, while we rezoned it, or we wouldn't be here. All right, that, thank you.
President, councillors, I'd like to offer a resolution to approve the application for a planned unit development with a general development plan by Steve Brown on behalf of Project Spark for the property currently legally described as lots 1 through 8, Block 1, integer addition.
Second.
It's not all read into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. In gen, oh, I'm sorry, I bumped, I bumped ahead. No, that is correct. Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Yes, President and councillors, a little comment, especially with the pedestrian access topic. My understanding is there's sidewalks along Minnesota Street and 14th South Street. Is there a sidewalk on 13th? Yeah. I would like to see that.
So, I would like to just interject a little bit on that. I had had a discussion with the city engineer. 13th was resurfaced not too long ago. So, if or when that, when that street is repaired again, they would order in sidewalks on both sides of the street, because at this time, there's no sidewalk on either the north side or the south side of 13th South.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little rusty at it, but city engineer, the building official, but I believe that alley entrance, they're all fully ADA accessible, correct?
Madam President, city councillors, if you look at it from a grade perspective, so...
Madam President, City Councilors, if you look at it from a grade perspective, so standard ADA percentages are, you know, we have to have like a, less than 2% each direction for a landing and things of that nature. The slope of 13th South is not conducive to ADA compliance.
But I mean, the alley would qualify?
The alley does, yes. But when we get out to the street, that's where there, there is exceptions to that because of the street grade and things of that nature. But the alley itself is, I would say, under that 5%.
Thank you.
If I had to guess, I mean, we don't have survey data on that, but just looking at it, I would think it should be an accessible route into the development from the alley.
Thank you.
I just, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. You know, I'm in favor of the project. I'm glad we're getting, you know, more housing options, very diverse within our community. Couple of concerns I have, just like deliveries and things of that nature. I mean, did staff have any discussions with like emergency personnel? You know, if there's, how you handle an ambulance? You know, you're going to plug it up, you know, an alleyway or something like that? It just seems tight possibly, but just concerns. And, you know, this is probably a learning process for them too, starting with the corner.
Sure. So alley access for an ambulance would, there's more than enough with there for an alley access to the, for the ambulance. Now, fire truck, maybe the city engineer will be able to help me on this one. But this isn't very different than how you would access a, any other lot in the, or any other home in the grid section where you could access both on South Minnesota and drag hose, or you could access off of 13th? I don't know if they can make the turn into the alley, Joe.
Is it, city engineer, is it still 250 square feet or 250 feet from the road?
Yeah, we can, yeah. I, I think as far as coverage with our fire apparatus, you know, I obviously don't want to speak for the fire chief as he's not here. But, you know, as a member of the fire department, looking at the aerial apparatus, we'd be able to reach everything from most likely Minnesota Street. And then as well with the hose lays that are packed on the truck, they should be able to access the site by pulling hydrants from either German Street or Minnesota Street into the site.
Yeah. Thanks.
May I hear any comments?
I sound like a broken record. I just am in favor of this project as I was of the other housing projects that we're looking at. I think anything we can do to provide a variety of options to the residents of New Ulm is a win-win. This is just another piece of the puzzle that we are so fortunate is coming our way within this last year. When we look at the apartment buildings, we're looking at the Chooses or Barnum and Williams, and now tiny houses. So I'm very supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 4.3 is comprehensive plan amendment, change land use designation from low-density residential to high-density residential.
So this is for the exact same property that we were just discussing for the general development plan. So I'm not going to give a background information on the location and everything if the council's okay with that. The planning commission at their June 26, 2025 meeting unanimously recommended approval of the request. And the reasoning for that request is based on the findings of facts that's attached with your packets. So similar to the zoning designation on that property, the comprehensive land use designation on this property has flipped back and forth as well. So in, let me get back to my notes here. In the 1963 comprehensive plan, this was designated as industrial property. In the 1996 comprehensive plan, this was designated as high-density residential. And then in 2024, the comp plan changed it to low-density residential. So it's only been low-density residential for about 10 months. I would note that part of the reason for that change from low dens, from high-density residential to low-density residential is kind of two reasons. Number one, the existing property owner, Mr. Sabatino, had proposed twin homes and a single-family home on that lot. And then secondly, he also came back in 2023 and requested a variance to reduce the side yard setbacks to install single-family homes on those lots. So the most recent information that we had of what was going to be proposed on that property was single-family development. And that's why we had made that change in the comprehensive plan from high-density to low-density. So other, other than that, the surrounding, surrounding land uses include low-density to the east, low-density to the north, and then we have commercial, which would be Riverbend School District in that area. And then we also have more commercial and industrial further to the south. The, the planning commission felt that this designation for this property met, met the similar land uses that already exist in that neighborhood. And they were in full support of changing the comprehensive plan to high-density residential for this area. There were two proposed conditions. One, that the applicant slash owner will pay the cost to record the necessary documents at the Brown County Recorder's Office. And that the, number two, that the amendment of the land use categories are subject to the approval of the planned unit development zoning designation for the subject property. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you.
It really is a perfect property for this, for this project. I mean, you look at the whole plot of the city. So I'll offer a resolution to approve the petition of Steve Brown to amend the city's comprehensive plan to allow high-density residential land uses in the place of low-density residential land uses for the property legally described as lots one through eight, block one, Inger addition, and generally located at 418 and 424, 13th South Street, and 1305 to 1315 South Minnesota Street.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number 4.4 is ordinance number 2025-TBD, first consideration zoning for Project Spark.
Okay, this is another part to any planned unit development project in that when we, when we go through the planning development process, it means changing the zoning designation from its current designation to PUD dash whatever number it is. So this is the first consideration of ordinance 2025, amending chapter 3.2 of Appendix A of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. The property described in the ordinance will be rezoned from Medium Density Residence District, R3, to Planned Unit Development District, number four. Currently, the property is legally described as lots one through eight, integer addition. And the street addresses are generally 418 and 424, 13th South Street, and 1305 to 1315, South Minnesota Street. This is the first consideration. We would bring back the second consideration at the July 15 meeting. At that point in time, the following, probably Saturday or Tuesday, it would be published in the New Ulm Journal, and then it would go into effect 30 days after publication. And that concludes the staff report.
Motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number 2025, amending chapter 3.2 of Appendix A of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion does carry. Item 4.5 is a planned unit development, general development plan for River Haven Housing.
You guys are stuck with me for two more items. So this is the planned unit development, general development plan for River Haven Housing, an application by Dean Madigan on behalf of River Haven Housing and the City of New Ulm, who's the owner of the property, for a general development plan that's associated with the PUD zoning district. That's intended to accommodate 118-unit mixed-use residential housing project at that location. The planning commission at their June 2026 meeting unanimously recommended approval of this request with conditions and based on the findings of facts forms that were completed by the commission and included in your packet. I would note that this item was tabled at their May 29 planning commission meeting. And the reason they wanted to table that is they wanted the developer to come back with a landscape plan and to come back with a grading plan for the property. Lands, sorry, the developer did provide that with staff, and it was presented to the planning commission at their June 26 meeting. So for the purposes of evaluating this project, staff used the development standards assigned to the R4 High Density Residential Zoning District. The property, subject property, has a total area of 7.6 acres. Approximately six of the acres of the site are being farmed and 1.61 was formerly mined and not in active use. The project area consists of 17 building lots in the River Haven addition. Lots one through 10 would be developed as twin home lots, so you could put five twin homes on those lots. Lots 11 through 16 would be developed as single-family homes. And lots 17 would be developed with two apartment buildings and six townhomes. The developer is proposing to construct the two 48-unit apartments as the first phase of the project, and the townhomes or row homes as phase two of the project. Both of the apartments and townhomes will be owned and operated by the developer. And the developer is estimating grading work would be done on the site in the summer or fall of 2025, with potential start to construction in the fall or winter of 2025. They're also proposing to sell the twin home and single-family home lots to area private developers or individuals. The development schedule for these homes is unknown and will be subject to market demand. So there'll be four types of housing units on this property, apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, and twin homes. And each housing, housing type will have its own architectural style. I would note that this was brought to the plant, sorry, the city council back in 2022. At that point in time, the developer was proposing to maintain ownership of all the properties, so including the apartments, twin homes, and, and single-family homes, and then rent those. They made a change to that and wanted to now sell the single-family homes and twin home lots. And in addition, there was a period of two years that had gone past. So we wanted to bring it back to the planning commission and also give the surrounding neighborhood a chance to voice any concerns or issues that weren't addressed. As you all know, and as is included in this packet, there has been opposition to this project, both verbally at the planning commission and in writing, and those written comments are provided in your packets. I would note that if you look through your packets, and I'm not going to go through this all in great detail, but staff, our GIS person in the engineering office did a great job comparing elevations of both ground level elevations of using the grading plan that's proposed by the developer versus the elevations of the existing twin homes. We did a comparison of elevations that way. We also took a look at elevations, if you were standing at the front step of those existing twin homes on the north side of Maplewood Avenue and looking up towards the apartments, how high would you be looking up in the air above you to the peak of those apartments? We also took, took a look at scale. So we compared the elevations of the peaks of the existing twin homes to the elevations of the apartments. And then lastly, we also compared if the single-family homes and if the twin homes were to be, were to be constructed at a height, same height as the twin homes that are already existing on the north side of Maplewood Avenue. If you're standing at the front porch of your existing twin home, looking over towards the apartment, how much of that apartment would you see above the twin home? And using the height of 26 feet for the proposed or could be twin home on the south side of Maplewood Avenue, generally speaking, you'd see 26 to 28 feet of the apartment standing above that twin home. So we tried to offer the clearest picture to the planning commission of what's being proposed up here and, and the scale of this type of project. The apartments are proposed to be 179 feet long, 70 feet in width, and then 43 and a half feet in height. There were three recommended conditions by the planning commission. One, that the applicant owner pay the cost to record the necessary documents with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, that the establishment of the PUD project will require the approval of rezoning of the property by ordinance and development agreement with the city. Planning commission also recommended a third condition, that the developer shall work with the city to provide enhanced landscaping on the property. And what I think they were looking for is what their landscaping plan shows is the minimum, they've met the minimum. But what can we do with the developer to provide enhanced landscaping? For instance, could we put in larger trees from the very beginning of this project to help try to screen it? Could we try to work on saving more trees that are existing on that parcel to, let's call it, the north and east? What can we do to, to try to provide the most amount of screening early on in the project stages rather than working on it toward, working on it at the end or just providing small trees that might take 20, 30 years to get much larger? So the developer is aware of that additional condition, and that's why we wanted to include it here with the staff report tonight. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Niceley.
One more question, John. Did I hear you say that this fall, they were planning on some site work and grading work?
Correct.
And no other timeline in concrete?
No other timeline in concrete. They want to, they want to potentially start construction in the winter. But we, at this time, we don't have any building plans. And I, I don't know if we're 100% sure if they sent anything up to Dolly for plumbing review yet. But we all know that that has additional timelines that are tacked on to the construction schedule. So they may be waiting for the approval by the city council before they invest any more money in that type of thing.
I understand that. It's, we've been at this since, for two years, lot of staff time. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All are for the resolution to approve the application of Dean Madigan, applicant on behalf of River Haven Housing LLC and the City of New Ulm for the general development plan and that is associated with the PUD zoning district intended to accommodate 118-unit, 118-unit mixed-use residential housing project on property generally located in part of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 24 Township, 110 North, Range 31, West, and Out Lot B, Maplewood Drive, First Edition. The street address is 1800 North Highland Avenue and 1425 to 1625 Maplewood Drive.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Under new business, item 5.1 is a purchase agreement for River Haven Housing LLC.
Okay, so this is for the project we had just discussed. In your packets, you have the real estate, or sorry, the purchase agreement for real property that was developed or, or put together by the city attorney. That's also been shared with the proposed developer, developer, Mr. Madigan, and they have already signed the purchase agreement. I would note two things on, on this purchase agreement. One, that the real estate taxes and special assessments shall be payable within one year of the closing date, and that the purchase of the property shall be for $1.00 and to be paid on the date of closing. Because this is a project or a piece of property that the city is sending, selling for housing, it's not considered a business subsidy, and therefore, we can sell it for less, less than the market value or taxable value. The taxable value that Brown County has on this property in total is $1,004, $1,004,000. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Niceley.
All offer motion, offer a resolution to authorize city manager and finance director to sign a real property purchase agreement with River Haven Housing LLC for the property legally described as Exhibit A and Exhibit B in the attached purchase agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. Item 5.2, early retirement of general obligation debt issued in 2017.
Counselors, this is the first set of bonds that we've had available for early retirement over the last few years. So I would like to call the last two years of these bond payments in December. It will save us about $16,000 in interest, and it will allow us to keep the debt, debt levy in check for next year and future years.
President and councilors, I'd like to offer the resolution authorizing the early retirement of the December 1st, 2026 through 2028.
retirement of the December 1st, 2026 through 2027 payments of the general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bonds, Series 2017B on December 1st, 2025.
Yeah, all right. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 5.3 is to set a public hearing date for noise variance for music for emission.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 4:30 PM for request from Music for Emission, Terry Zinnell, for noise variance to permit amplified sound at Zinnell Utility Contracting for Somsen Street to host Party by the Pond event on Saturday, August 23, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Sunday, August 24, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Last item of business today is report of claims paid.
President and councilors, I'd like to make a motion to accept the list of claims paid in the amount of $3,124,121.35.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Carry. And with no additional business, today's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.